So we have two items, if I'm not mistaken. The Rule 20 ruling by Pat Burns. And the, you know, the work that will be done. If we pass the Neighborhood Enhancements Fund, and I know Tim Sheehan's here. And I don't know if someone else is here, Tina, maybe to talk about that. I assume, I don't have the agenda in front of me, but I assume that was first. That was the main thing, so. We have something going on in the chamber, so. Pardon me for the, but Pat, could you? Hello? Oh, Tina, hi.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good. I think Tim's probably gonna speak, and if you need me, I'll be kind of come in.
I figured we, that's great. Thanks for letting me know. I figured we would have Pat do his report, discuss his report. And then turn it over to you guys to talk about the Neighborhood Enhancements. Pat, are you ready to go?
Yes, thank you, Counselor. I filed the Rule 20 report Wednesday morning. As you can see from the report, it's a breakdown of the free cash uses for the current fiscal year. And we have a remaining balance of $3 million. Really, the major difference between if this order was in March or earlier in the fiscal year is unfortunately, the free cash expires on June 30th, and it rolls into next year's calculation. So that $3 million won't be available for appropriation from free cash until that is complete, which we aim to have done in early to mid-November. Unfortunately, we're at the mercy of the Department of Revenue when it comes to the free cash calculation, and they set the timetable. So, once we submit all the required documentation, we just have to get in line with the other 351 communities that are going through the same process at that time.
To get the 20, the free cash from fiscal year 23.
Correct.
Right. But right now, our opportunity is to use the money that came from free cash from fiscal year 2022. And you're, you were asked to do a report on it. Rule 20 report, are you good with, with the situation? Did you evaluate the financial situation, et cetera?
Yes, the, the order is calling for a $3 million transfer. That $3 million is currently available in free cash. And it can be appropriated up until Friday. But after that, it will no longer be available, so unfortunately, it's kind of a tight timeframe.
Right? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Tim Sheehan here in a second, and Tim and Tina. It seems that we, so Pat's given the financial report. There were questions on the floor that night at Budget Night as to what the uses of the money would be and how, how the mechanics of it would work, et cetera. So, Tim, could you speak to that?
Let's start with the mechanics and work our way back into the uses.
Okay.
It would be our, Victor's got his hand up. I don't know if you want to recognize him.
Yeah, Victor, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, if Tim, if he's gonna speak to the item, I would love to hear what he has to say.
You want to hear what he has to say, okay. Yep. Thank you, Counselor. Starting with the mechanics. The Development Services Division thinks that, you know, because this is a neighborhood-related program, that requests coming in for the utilization of the money should be flowing through the Neighborhood Councils up to the Neighborhood Services Division. And then the Neighborhood Services Division, in consultation with the Finance Department, would then be reviewing these applications and then bringing them back to the respective department heads and having a conversation with the respective department heads about the appropriateness of the request. So that's kind of like the logistical path that we, we saw the program going. We do not want to have an overly onerous application process for this. We really think that it should be almost like a job form request in terms of, you know, what the neighborhood or an applicant within the neighborhood is looking for. And have that come up with a support letter from the Neighborhood Council indicating that they're supportive of the request coming forward for consideration for the fund. And then, obviously, as I said, the Neighborhood Services Division and Finance would be in review of that request in conjunction with the appropriate department head. So that's kind of how the process would work. With regards to how, what type of program or projects we would be looking at. The Development Services Division would be suggesting that the fund have limitations around what it could be used for. So, we currently are working with PVPC to do a neighborhood investment plan for the various neighborhoods. And we would indicate that anything that was coming out of that five-year investment plan should be eligible for the fund. We also think that, and we've heard it in all of the neighborhood visits that we've been doing, that there's a consistent need for pedestrian improvements. That would include sidewalks, crosswalks, signage, lighting improvements, tree planting, installation of benches, wayfinding, signage, traffic calming solutions that gives you a sense as to.
What can you do about the parent handling that is so big? Yes, I mean, some of those people, it's amazing they haven't got.
We submitted.
Did we start the meeting?
Oh, yeah.
We'd be happy to talk with you afterwards about that.
Pat Burns already gave the report.
He did.
Yeah.
We missed.
The funding was there.
They said the funding is there.
Funding is there. Friday to approve it, right?
Right. If we don't approve it by Friday, it rolls into the 2023.
It's gonna go?
Yes, the types of uses. So to recap, procedurally, what we're saying is that if, if there was a use for a particular neighborhood, that, that request would funnel through the Neighborhood Council up to the Neighborhood Services Division, and then the Neighborhood Services Division, in conjunction with Finance and the appropriate department head, would be reviewing the request. So that's kind of procedurally how it would work.
Request doesn't have to be for some things?
That's what we're talking about, the types that it would be restricted to.
Right. Yeah. Tim, thank you for that overview, but who will, and I understand the mechanics and the process that you have explained to us. I wish that this was explained to us at the meeting. So, who will determine what project has priority?
What project has priority?
Yeah, because it's $3 million. It's not a heck of a, it is. But, you know, you have competing interests in different neighborhoods. How, what kind of system is going to be used to ensure that the policy is equitable?
Counselor, can I come back to that? I'd like to get through the types of projects that would be eligible and then come back into how we would prioritize them. Is that okay?
Absolutely. I think you were going, but go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so beyond the, the, as we discussed, the department right now is working with PVPC to actually do a public investment plan for the neighborhoods. So, anything that would be coming out of that, those public investment plans for the specific neighborhoods, that would be eligible to come forward as a request. Additionally, we talked about the, all of the neighborhoods that have indicated needs with regards to pedestrian improvements. Beyond that, we would also be dealing with park improvements, litter and dumping, dumping reductions, including waste receptacles, interim greening of vacant lots, disposal of dumping, and installation of monitoring of illegal dumping cameras. Public art would also be an eligible expenditure in beautification. And the sixth category would be costs associated with public programming of public spaces to increase residents' and public use of that public space. So we're kind of saying, within those six areas, the request needs to fit into one of those areas. And coming back to Counselor Davila's question, the department, in looking at this, I mean, as all of you know, $3 million does not go very far. I, I think what we would be looking at in terms of, of criteria to determine priority would be how how deep does the improvement touch on the, the neighborhood needs? For example, you know, if you were, if one project was dealing with a health and safety issue, as well as a public improvement, as well as enhancing a neighborhood commercial business district, reducing pollution-type of issues. So, you know, that kind of builds up the priority as to how many categories a particular project can, can address in terms of both the scale of the investment and the priority. Does that answer your question, Counselor?
It does, it does, Tim. And I thank you for, for your explanation. As I mentioned a while ago, I wish these things would have been explained to us in more details at the meeting. I'm always hesitant to approve money when nobody has a plan. At least one day, one day they cannot articulate. But I thank you, Tim. Thank you for your explanation, and no further questions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you. Counselor Davila.
Counselor Allen?
Yeah.
Counselor Perez, I have my hand raised. I have a question.
Yep.
TJ, would this, you have like a ranking process for this? When it comes to the $3 million and how it's gonna be allocated in the neighborhood?
He means Counselor?
Yeah, Lindsay. I don't know if TJ's here, but Lindsay, you're here. Could you take?
No, TJ's not here, but Counselor, did you mean Tim?
I mean Tim, sorry.
We're both Tims.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, that's how I define it. So, about the ranking process, how, could you explain more details about that?
There, there would be a scoring process associated with the applications in terms of weight that's given to specific categories. We haven't developed the application, Counselor. But as I was saying, a weight is gonna be given to issues such as economic distress within the neighborhood, issues relative to community health, issues relative to economic impact of the proposed improvement, et cetera. Does that answer your question?
In certain point, yes. I think we all share the concern how this money is gonna be dispersed, so. You know, and I think that's what is being raised. But I'm in totally support of the program, because looking at the, the north end, there's a lot of needs that did not go through with the ARPA monies. So, I think this is the time, this is gonna be well utilized. Thank you so much.
So not to elevate one particular neighborhood, but I think all of you know that there's been an ongoing community desire in Six Corners to do like a public art installation at the Roundabout. There is no budget for that. This is the type of programming that this funding could address. There, there's a number of neighborhoods that are looking to program better their, their particular open space or neighborhood parks. They don't have funding resources for that. This is a fund that could address those concerns as well.
Thank you.
Just to address a, a concern that was, I think I heard at, on the council floor. This, this program is not, and I want to be clear with the counselors, it's not an economic development program. It is focused on neighborhood improvements and neighborhood programming.
Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I know. I just wanted to see, so was there, that's. I just, I can't see from here, so I had to see. So, Counselor Whitfield is next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question is, like, I'm looking, I just recently was asked about the bathroom at Donaville Park. Would this, would that, could that be funded? Because there's also no funding for that. They put in CPA application before, didn't make it through. And if you want to like improve programming and things like that, you know, it's hard when you got your little kid or your grandmother. And I know that staffing can be an issue, but it would only need staffing when there's gonna be like safety nets and stuff like that. So I'm just wondering if that's something that could be.
Yes, that, that's something that could come forward in the application. We, we then, when Neighborhood Services got it, we would consult with, with Pat and basically say, there's a funding request for this purpose. Are you in alignment with that? And make sure that we're, we're ready to go.
Is, um, is there like a cap on the amount each neighborhood could get, or?
Again, the $3 million isn't a lot.
That's what I mean.
We're kind of hoping that, you know, it becomes a sustainable $3 million that gets allocated to neighborhoods. So that, you know, we're not just doing a one-off program. It becomes implemented every year.
Right.
And that way, you have the ability, if you didn't get funded this year, you have the ability to get funded in a future cycle. But we haven't gotten to, to capping anything yet.
Okay, and then my final question is like, say, the project is 750, but you only approve like 350. Could they hold on to that fund, funding, and then wait to try to get additional funding for a project? Or does the whole project need to be funded?
I think, you know, for efficiency purposes, you want to be able to see the project get implemented. And, you know, we, we have a difficulty in government in terms of allocation of resources. You know, we, we make a determination of how much we're giving to a program, but we don't understand where the rest of it's coming from and what the impact is to the program of the cut. So, you know, I'd like to be looking at, you know, quality programming that, you know, either we're gonna 100% support or the, the applicant has got other resources in line, ready to go.
Because I know with the, the whole bathroom situation, I know for CPA applications, if you already have some funding available, like even if it's CDVG or whatever, you know, it'll, it'll have a better consideration to fund the rest.
Oh, if, if somebody's coming with leverage to the table, that, that will definitely be an advantage to their score.
Okay.
Tim, I think that's probably something we would work into the scoring criteria, right? The leverage and things like that.
Yes.
Thanks, Counselor Whitfield. Counselor Letterman?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. A question for Tim on the process. So, Tim, I think I heard you say that the requests would come through a yet-to-be-developed application that would be submitted by Neighborhood Councils. Are Neighborhood Councils the only entities that would be able to petition the fund?
No, it would just flow through the Neighborhood Councils. So the, the, someone besides a Neighborhood Council could apply for the funding. But without the Neighborhood Council advancing it to Neighborhood Services, it wouldn't be able to get reviewed. So it's getting the consent of the Neighborhood Council to say that they're in favor of this project, and they want to see it get funded.
And what's your thought on the timeline for distribution of the funds?
Well, I, I am actually in favor, given the, the limited amount of funding, that the application be out for a reasonable period in time to allow people to pull their, their information together. But that it it, it ultimately go as a, a pool of projects that get reviewed as opposed to incrementally just letting them come in in dribs and drops. Does that answer your question? I think that's what you were asking me, right?
So what's the, what's the earliest you could see in distribution, and what's the latest?
Well, I mean, if we allowed a, a month to, to six week, or to six weeks for applications to be developed, and then took a month to review and process with the various departments, I would kind of hope we could do something in a 90 to 120 days.
So you'd be thinking of like, you could allocate within three months. So we're talking announcements in September, October. If you're talking physical improvements, then you're not acting on those till the next construction cycle theoretically, right?
Yeah, I was only talking about getting it through the process in terms of the approval process internally to award.
Yeah. Okay, and how'd you arrive at the $3 million number?
That's a better question for TJ. Because I, I would, I, I would have wanted more.
Well, the reason I ask is, you know, I'm just thinking, you know, certainly the, you know, administration made available the $100,000 through ARPA to each Neighborhood Council, and I know that, you know, from talking with members there, you know, each council has sort of been going through a, a process to figure out the best way to spend that $100,000. And I think there's, you know, been some, some challenges and barriers that they've encountered in, in figuring that out. If you look at this $3 million number, you know, depending on how you slice it up theoretically, you know, if you were just doing it equally across the board, you'd be looking at about $176,000, which I think some of the projects that are coming forward from various neighborhoods that are much needed. You know, Counselor Whitfield spoke of one just a minute ago. You know, those are, are larger projects. And so I'm just sort of trying to fully understand how we're gonna equitably see this distributed in a meaningful way.
Lindsay?
Yeah, so I can speak on the $3 million. So, based, based on what was left for us with free cash, in free cash, the $3 million number, we knew that we wanted to allocate more money because of, you know, we had a better idea of the need. And I think that $3 million is a number that everybody was good with starting with. Since we had this kind of available money to use, that's what we wanted to do first.
Okay, Jesse, are you okay with your questions?
And can I just speak to one of Counselor Letterman's points? That I do want to point out a small difference, well, actually not really small, difference between the $100,000 and this funding. I, my understanding from Finance is that these will be city-funded, I believe, and mostly administered projects. Whereas a lot of the councils are using some of that $100,000 to help with some of their operating costs as well. That, I don't believe would be the case for this fund. And Lindsay or Tim, please jump in and correct me if I'm wrong there.
No, that's correct, Tina. These, these are mostly city-driven investments in neighborhood projects.
Thank you.
Great. I don't see anybody else in the queue.
Justin in the queue, but.
Justin is in the, I thought that was Jesse. Okay, yeah, Justin, go. Were you? Counselor Hurst? Or you were, you were before him. So Counselor Walsh.
You want to do it?
Counselor Allen, you know, I find it helpful to make a list.
It's not, it's not that. It's, it's looking both ways, kind of thing, to the left and to the right. But anyway, Counselor Walsh.
Okay, so if you receive ARPA funds, you are not disqualified for these projects, or is that a condition?
In terms of the Neighborhood Council?
Yeah, in terms of accessing the, the funds you're talking about, that they.
No, they wouldn't be disqualifying, because as I, as I indicated, these are mostly city-driven projects that are dedicated to neighborhood improvements.
But tell me what you said about the PVPC, Fine Valley Planning Commission. What's their role in this? Do the Neighborhood Councils have to go through them?
No, no, they're, they're actually working with them now. So as part, as, as part of ARPA neighborhoods, we undertook a planning process with PVPC, and PVPC is doing work now in the neighborhoods, basically listening to the neighborhoods about what they want to see as an investment strategy going forward in terms of public investments in their neighborhoods over the course of the next five years, and what improvements they would like to see happen in their neighborhoods.
Okay, so they do not have to get the approval?
No.
Okay, that was a concern. Well, I think this explanation is, is helpful, if there's nobody else. What are you gonna do? Why can't it be $5 million?
Well, I got Counselor Hurst. Alibi Counselor Whitfield and Counselor Goon. Counselor Hurst, yeah, you have the floor.
Yeah, quick question. How, how are we engaging those neighborhood councils and civic associations who don't, you know, who may be having difficulty filling out the application, probably had difficulty with ARPA, and probably have not received much of any funds from ARPA thus far? How do we engage those, those Neighborhood Councils and organizations? And civic associations, sorry?
That would be done, Counselor, through the Neighborhood Services Division. And the, the engagement, Tina, correct me if I'm wrong, but there's been significant outreach in terms of the neighborhoods through the ARPA process.
Yeah.
And, and that would, that would continue with this program in terms of making sure they're fully informed and not necessarily as a, a collective group, but more individually speaking with them about, you know, what they, they, you know, what they're hearing from folks about what they want to see.
Yeah, so with the, with the ARPA $100,000 and with the Neighborhood Economic Recovery Fund, we did do extensive technical assistance that included group sessions for all of the councils, and then we also went out and did small group sessions. So, we had multiple sessions that included all the councils, and then smaller sessions that included like one to three councils to help them with that. And then if they needed additional assistance filling out the application, or as they're submitting their scopes and budgets, Ed or I are meeting with them one-on-one. I mean, between Ed and I, we, I would say we talked to most of the Neighborhood Councils on at least a weekly basis, if not more than that at this point.
It, it should also be noted that this, you know, what I envision in terms of an application for this program, Counselor, it will look nothing like the ARPA application, and it, it will be much more simplistic.
Well, I think it would probably be comparable to the NERF application that we utilized for capital improvements, which I think was like a page and a half. The Neighborhood Councils, once we walked them through it and they went through it, most of them said it was fairly easy and fairly user-friendly. So we would use that same CognitO forms format, which is fairly user-friendly. And I think now they're all pretty familiar with it, now that they've done it twice.
Okay, and I guess the only other question I would have is, how are we making sure that the neighborhood, that the civic associations are reaching out to the members in the community? Because sometimes I find that Neighborhood Councils and civic associations are very small in numbers. And so, what it is that they ultimately end up putting forward is a project that maybe a select few want to see get done as opposed to the entire neighborhood. And so I guess my question to you is, is there a plan for us to ensure that these individuals have done some significant outreach to the entire community to make sure that they are representing the voices of many as opposed to a select few?
Yeah, so with the $100,000, we've encouraged them to submit it to us in chunks, basically, so they have a lot of time to kind of do that outreach. Also, as part of that, we've released to them recommended and best practices for doing that type of neighborhood. For doing that type of neighborhood outreach. Um, and we're requiring them to submit to us in detail. The steps they took to do that further outreach. So that we can review it and sort of make sure that they are getting neighborhood input. Um, and resident input from folks, and I think we'd probably look to continue that same type of process. That we've been following for the hundred thousand.
And councillor, I I I would assume, I would say suggest that that also would factor into this. Uh, review of the application relative to scarring, you know, how much evidence did they put in? Uh, from the neighborhood council standpoint that this was vetted, you know, more fully in the neighborhood.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you councillor Hurst, um councillor Whitfield, you were next, but. Councillor Govan, Govan, go next, she hasn't spoken yet.
Um, Mr. Chair, thank you councillor Whitfield. Um, so Tim, of course, I think that we should have five, ten million dollars for this. So my question would be, is this the only funding that's going to be used for projects like these? Because we know we have like the casino tax money. So for example, if councillor Whitfield's project in the park for the bathroom, the cost, say, seven hundred thousand dollars. Maybe she could get three hundred thousand from this, and then maybe another hundred thou- few hundred thousand from other parts of of money. Is that possible potentially?
Yes, we, as I said, you know, uh, it it the the application will score better. The more leverage it has associated with it.
Right.
And there would be nothing that would preclude, you know, uh, somebody from applying to another funding source. Associated with uh not associated with this program.
Okay, okay, and then I think my other question was was answered, it's city-driven projects, so for example, the bathrooms, the city would. Fix up the bathroom, not.
That's yes, yeah, no, there's. A- a- as Tina said, that's some of the challenges with the hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
It's really driven by the neighborhood council, this is more, the neighborhood council is making a request for this investment to be done. And the city to do that work.
Right, yeah, so my last point, I think, is what councillor Hurst asked about, and it's about the neighborhoods getting involved. I know that Tina, both Tina and Ed came out to the Indian Ocean Citizens Council a few times. And kind of like held our hands, even though we've been used to writing grants and talking to the community um and coming out. They um have been doing that even up until now, trying to help us get the money that we spent, because it was a reimbursement um with the ARPA anyways. I mean, not the ARPA, um, the Neighborhood Recovery um Fund. So um I just want to thank you all for doing that, and I'm glad that it's going to continue. And that um the neighborhood councils will be able to maybe advocate for more community participation. Because I think when someone, things like this happen, like with the hundred thousand dollars. When we said to the community, oh, we have this hundred thousand dollars that we need to spend, they came out, you know, and they came to talk about it. We've had community dinners where we've talked about it, but I think this actually would be an impetus for more members of the of the community to come out. So I'm I'm excited about that, yeah, it is very good, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Um, councillor Allen, if I may also, um, I just want to update also back to councillor Hurst's point about um. You know, neighborhood councils often being quite small and not always meeting um. Talking with all the residents, one of the things we've also undertaken as part of this process. And we anticipate coming out relatively soon is a um neighborhood council handbook. That would be available so that when there are new residents that want to come on to council boards. It sort of helps them get up to speed with how councils work, what the best practices are for councils. Um, you know, Robert's rules, all those kinds of things, and that um we've been working with. Uh, a bunch of the council boards to try to develop that and to incorporate things in there that will be useful for new council board members. And we're anticipating that should be completed within the next thirty days. So we're working really hard to try and beef up the neighborhood councils and make them more inclusive. And to try to make that easier for the volunteers that do get on these boards.
Right, that's great, how are those gonna be distributed, the neighborhood council books?
Um, they'll be, we'll have printed copies, but we'll also be putting it up on our website, so it's always available um in perpetuity for folks. And as, you know, each council will get a certain number of copies. And then we'll continue to have that available electronically, publicly for folks.
Okay, thank you.
Great, thanks. So checking the lineup, we got councillor Whitfield, followed by councillor Letterman, councillor Whitfield.
A question and a comment, but comment first, so when we were doing the marijuana applications. One thing that we didn't want to do is have the marijuana applications weighted on the neighborhood council's letter of recommendation. Because not all councils are gonna favor everyone else's um, you know, decision. So I just want to make sure that when we consider this, like, so I would much rather it go through the department um where the. The project would be done, whether it's DPW for sidewalks and streets, whether it's parks, um, just like the CPA applications. A lot of times, some do go through the um neighborhood councils, but neighborhood councils usually work with the department to push the application forward. Because we, I would hate to see like favoritism or anything like that happen through the council, someone dislikes someone's personality. And then just really, you know, shove their idea to the side. The only thing that I think is different is these are already city projects, right?
Yeah.
So they're already like projects that Chris, Pat, and those guys are aware of.
No, not necessarily, um, it could be a new project, um, it could be a project that they might have heard about or dealt with. But there wasn't any money to implement, um, but um. I I think that there is a bit of a difference between this type of program and the the uh cannabis. Uh, in so much as that was a a business coming into the neighborhood. And it neighborhood councils could have had conflicting views around that type of business.
Yeah.
Um, I think the issue that we're trying to establish here is that. Uh, and maybe maybe we look at it a little more broadly to your point, that it it could be the neighborhood council. Uh, flowing it to the the Neighborhood Services Division. Or, you know, maybe it's, you know, an indication from two elected officials in that neighborhood. Or some other uh entity could have the ability to get it to us.
Cause I'm just looking at like some of the makeup of some of the neighborhood councils, and you gotta select few from a select top area of that whole neighborhood. And they're the ones who have the voting power, have the, you know, that type of stuff, so I just want to make sure.
Previously have have allowed it to be, um, you you could get a letter, uh, like. Free letters from uh businesses in the neighborhood that support it. Um, I I think we had also allowed elected officials that represent the neighborhood. If they thought it was a good idea to bring it up, we can certainly look at expanding it just beyond the neighborhood councils.
Yeah, we did that with the NERF, we had, because we didn't want to put it all on the neighborhood councils either, recognizing that they're volunteer boards. And maybe have the time to kind of hear all of the requests. So there was sort of a couple of different options for how you could evidence neighborhood support. Um, so I think to Tim's point, yeah, we definitely look at that.
All right, thank you.
Hey, thanks councillor Whitfield, that brings us to councillor Letterman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, um, so to to Tim and Tina and the team, I'm I'm hearing that you're saying. The requests will will come through the neighborhood councils, like at first it was that no request would be considered. If it didn't have uh the backing of the neighborhood council, is that is that accurate?
Um, it it to to the point that councillor Whitfield was making is that, you know, there's seemingly a desire to have. A little bit broader level of uh ability to get uh consideration. And I'm indicating that with the NERF program, we allowed those those different avenues beyond the neighborhood council. And maybe that's something that we should look at with this.
And who's gonna, who's gonna ultimately rank the applications?
That would be the Neighborhood Services Division, Finance, and the Department, the respective department.
So this ranking, is this gonna be binding? Or ultimately, is the appropriation gonna just be, you know, subject to the executive?
Oh, in terms of uh the 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 approv- the final approval of the funding?
Final approval, but also, you know, any appropriation out of the fund. In other words, are are there some projects that that, you know, may be able to receive appropriation? Uh, without going through the process, or is every single project gonna go through the process?
As I as I indicated, we would like to actually have the the process move as a a group, uh, as a collective. As opposed to piecemeal, and it would all come out at once. So all of the projects that would be funded with the three million would be announced i- through a a of an award. As opposed to um doing it, you know, ten at it, or it's only three million dollars, like three at a time. You know, it would all come out together.
Right, but all of those projects that get announced, when they get announced, they will have all gone through this ranking process with a. Letter of recommendation from the neighborhood council or from another establishing entity that that you deem appropriate.
Yes.
Okay, and the last thing I'll say is, the last question I have is, uh, you know, in terms of um. You mentioned kind of accepting applications on a rolling basis, I think we know that, you know, some of our neighborhood councils and civic associations. Um, you know, have uh different levels of resources in terms of how they've allocated the funding they already have. And also just in terms of uh the bandwidth of the board, because it is a volunteer board. Um, and you know, I got my start on a neighborhood council, so I really value um the work that they do. But I know that some of them are better resourced right now than others, and so the only thing I'd be a a little concerned with in that context is making sure. That um, you know, the ones that may take a little longer to get the applications together. Aren't cut out of the process, and even to the point of projects that may be further along and have other funding being leveraged behind them. I think there should be some consideration for um, you know, others that maybe earlier on. Um, but in, you know, coming out of neighborhood councils and civic associations that may have, uh, you know, not been able to advance as many recommendations previously. So can we get some assurance that, um, you know, there will be an eye towards that?
We will check in in terms of as we approach closer to the deadline. Neighborhood councils that we have not gotten applications from to determine if they are submitting. And what is the holdup in terms of them getting an application in?
And I and I think in in those cases, that, you know, often it's the technical assistance, you know, it depends on how big their board is and how much time they have. Or access to technology, um, and so I think that, you know, if we can make the neighborhood services team available for that technical assistance. That's gonna be important to making sure they're included.
Sure, just to clarify though, uh, I I was recommending that we not do a rolling, that there be a fixed uh submission date uh Dubai.
Okay, yeah, as long as leading up to that date, we're 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 actively, you know, recruiting applications, uh, I think that's important.
Okay, councillor Fatness, join us, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, thank you, I'm not seeing anybody, well, I take it back, there's not councillor, let's councillor Perez, you're in the queue.
Thank you, thank you. Um, I just for point of clarification, so any applications, um, if it comes from civic, um. From civic associations has to be submitted to the councils, the neighborhood council?
Um, I think what we're talking, uh, as we were working through this this evening councillor. Um, the question was brought up, you know, it should be, we should consider going beyond just the neighborhood council. And what we're suggesting is that, uh, for example, it could be. Uh, we'll have a number of different ways that an application can advance, it could be the, you know, uh, two elected officials. That represent the neighborhood, uh, it could be a situation of having three businesses that are in support of it for the neighborhood. That type of thing, so it wouldn't necessarily just have to come through and get the support of the 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 neighborhood council. There'd be other options.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Sharon.
All right, thank you, um, councillor Perez. Okay, checking again councillor Letterman, I are you up another time or are you done?
Nope, that's just from last time, sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Last time, okay, no problem, not seen anybody else, um, councillor Whitfield and councillor Govan had to leave the meeting. Uh, but we have not yet gotten to uh item number two, which is the order for um.
So I did have one final question.
Oh, go ahead.
What I wanted is, um, this is off of projects, you know, when we were thinking about the things that people are concerned about, like security. Would this ever fund personnel? Could it, could it fund like a a security guard or something at some of these playgrounds or? Would do anything like that?
Um. It, I wouldn't necessarily say would be, it wouldn't be eligible, but I think we we would. Try to figure out, you know, how that would actually work. Correct, right, so you would need like a security guard uh available. So, y- yeah, I think i- i- in answer to your question with that example. It would come in as, you know, ultimately having the bathrooms open to a po- the public at a specific.
Time.
Time.
Right.
And then we would address all of the issues relative to in the budget, what does that entail? And if it entailed the need to have a security person, then it could be funded through the program.
Of course, no, no problem, okay, I'm not seeing anybody else in the queue. So let's move on to the item number two for this committee meeting, which is the um. Moving money from reserve for contingencies to fire salaries and wages, um, Lindsay, could you help us with this one?
Sure, thank you councillor, um, so this order is kind of a last-minute transfer into the fire department's budget. So recently, the retro was paid for the IAFF settlement. And because some of the grants over the past few years, um. That initially salaries were charged against are closed now, it becomes a general fund expense. So this transfer will cover most of the funding um needed to cover those expenses.
So this is um. Let let me just get straight, um, when we passed the fire salaries and wages, it was two point nine million or somewhere in that vicinity. Is that, this isn't added on money for that?
Yes.
Okay, so it's really related to their new contract?
It is, and it's because when we did the calculation to come up with the amount of money we needed to transfer into their budget. To um cover the cost of retro, there were a few things that we didn't realize would be charged against the general fund. Um, the majority of which was the grants that have closed.
Okay, um, so this is the best way to handle this at this point?
Yes, and the transfer is coming from reserve for contingency, um, which is currently in the general fund. And would flow through free cash, otherwise it's not coming from, you know, an outside funding source outside of the general fund. So we thought that that was the best use of the remainder of reserve or contingency as well.
Yeah, good, so is is there any money left in reserve for contingencies?
I think it's about seven thousand dollars is left there.
Okay, and we have one week, right, and one, the last week of the budget year, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Pat's counting down the days.
Uh, does anybody have any comment on item two, the reserve of contingencies to fire salaries and wages?
Lindsay, has the um, has the retro been paid now, have the members actually received the retro?
Um, it was either paid in this past paycheck or it's being paid in this paycheck, one of the two.
It was paid last week.
It was paid last week, I'm sorry.
Somebody's not coming through very clear. Jesse, we can't. That's better.
So the retro. Can you hear me now?
I can hear hear that question, but not before that.
Oh, I just said, so the, I just wanted to confirm the retro had already been paid.
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Fatton.
I just have one question, Lindsay, do you know, does the retro get paid to uh people who have left the service of the city? Since um the contract was renegotiated. to, uh, people who have left the service of the city since, um, the contract was renegotiated?
For the fire, for IFF, I would have to double check. Pat, do you know off the top of your head?
I believe they do. I know the police department does.
The police department does. I don't know about fire.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Think, uh, I'm not seeing anybody's hand up. I'm not seeing anybody raising their hand.
Just one question, um, councillor, do you want me to find that out for you for the seven o'clock?
You, you talking to me? No, that's okay. It's, you know, I'll, I'll, it's just a curiosity. It really doesn't, it's not your name.
Okay.
Okay. Going once, going twice, anybody in Uberland out there? All right, thanks everybody for attending. And we, we don't have the committee, we have the full committee here. Councillor Whitfield and councillor Govan are both on the finance committee. I thought we would take a vote, but they, they both had to leave the meeting. So we'll just bring it up again in the council meeting. Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody. Good job. Thank you.